Committee meeting in the hole for Wednesday, April twelfth, the Osceola School Board in order. Well, Kavo, Jan.
Here.
Brooke, here. Hi, Seth. Jeff.
Here.
Wyatt.
Here.
Emma.
Yeah.
And myself, this is Jan. First off, I'm gonna introduce Shannon Grindal. Is that right?
Yes.
She is our new business manager. She will take you in at our position starting July first. So, welcome to our meeting. Next up is on our agenda is the twenty-one, twenty-two final audit review from CLA. Welcome. It was Jonathan Chilwood.
Correct. Yep. Thank you for having me here tonight. Hopefully, the, I did said earlier today, it's a two-page, brief handout, quick, because it's plenty of time. So, I'm gonna spare you all from the very massively large full audit report with all the bells and whistles in here. That would take me probably two to three days to go through that completely for yourself. So, there, everybody, that's fun and enjoy it down here. Play with this one time. Through my presentation, if anybody has any questions for me, please stop me as I go along. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. You have this to go back to, as well as we'll put more on policy as well through some of the maybe more technical questions if I can't answer those. So, first off, I just wanna thank all the district staff that myself and my team got some work with employing together all the requirements to draft your financial statements. We did experience some significant challenges in terms of just industry challenges that all of providing school district audits this year. Hence, the reason why I'm, you know, in front of you today presenting the twenty-two financial results here in April of twenty twenty-three. So, due to, you know, some implementations of some new accounting standards, which was definitely a challenge, some challenges that we had in reviewing some prior, you know, GAZB implementations, and I'll highlight those in my presentation as I get to them, as well as obviously doing some staff transitions and turnover steering within the district. So, kind of a perfect storm of a bunch of things, you know, the reality where we're at. Obviously, improve our processes and get back on track with more prompt, tiny, more future audits going forward. So, if there's any questions, again, through all of what, before I dive into some financial information, Cleveland. Jonathan, just add two of them. Jonathan would leave the committee meetings, so this will be the time if you have questions for him before he heads back. Office or home? Home office is the technical term. It's, you know, never any more than the sound of your party. So, just to dive into a few administrative-type things or, you know, higher level before you, a few numbers here. Item number one is the actual auditor's report itself. So, in your nice hundred-plus-pound page report here, the only pieces of paper that we as CLA technically own is our auditor's opinion, which is the first three to four pages of your full financial statements. So, from an outside, external auditor's perspective, we issue what's known as an unmodified or quote-unquote clean opinion of the financial statements. So, through all of our testing, we need to be able to get to that point. We don't have any major material, significant items that would be missing or omitted from your financial statements. That's the highest level of assurance that any independent auditor can issue over financial statements, and that's honestly what DPI expects and requires. So, we have to do a report that we've gotten there eventually, and now we issued our report as such. Also, through the course of our audit, we issue a few other communications to the district management letter. So, it's a report on the internal controls over the entire financial system itself. So, clearly, there are a few issues here or there that we do need to bring up to the governance, you know, you folks in front of me here tonight. Those two items are same as last year-type items. They're very common recurring items, and something to keep in mind for you all as we, you know, go through your audit. The first being the limited segregation of duties. Little Jen is now taking over as the business manager to try to segregate and separate those very important internal controls between the various functions of the finance system. But realistically, you're boiling down to two, three, maybe four people at best at a district your size. So, you do need to have those backups in place for things like unexpected absences and whatnot. So, it boils down to one person, two people are doing basically the bulk. There is some vest of your ability to check some balances there. But really, the mitigating control to try and have is the very active day-to-day oversight of the board, of yourselves. So, anytime that there's expenditures that are being approved, you know, kind of unusual transactions, anything to do with capital projects, so with those types of business-type discussions and those reviews and approvals, you all around at the table up there are mitigating control of the limited segregation of duties issued in your finance staff. Very, very common for any, basically, all of the districts that I serve in Wisconsin here, I'm not aware of any districts that we've worked with as CLA, and well, upwards of forty, almost four-five, or close to fifty, actually, in Elfer next year, all of them receive the same finding. So. The next one up there is material audit adjustments, which basically means through the course of our audit work, we had proposed adjustments to your books which, you know, either a number or, you know, in total amount of journal entries at post or dollar amounts that we've discovered through our testing, they made a material difference to the, to a reader of the financial statements. So, in the current year, we posted roughly about thirty-four entries. It's on power of about thirty-two entries in the prior year, which quite honestly is a little bit higher than what, you know, I would hope to see from an external audit perspective for a school district, simply because DPI does have a very rigorous set of accounts that you, you know, that you have to operate in. The requirements are pretty well spelled out in the WOOPER accounting code. So, from the whole, if an overall standpoint of things that could help process the audit quicker would definitely be improvements over year-end reconciliations and closeouts and those types of issues. And some of those definitely fall into some of the other items I'll highlight as well. They tend to be a change in accounting standards, working with the district staff as well as with us to help, and DPI resources as well, to help reduce some of those entries going forward. And I know that there is, it has been improvement, you know, from year after year, but obviously, we're always striving to have, to have to propose and, you know, adjust those entries overall. The next item there for you is under the compliance headline or heading up there. Part of our audit, we're required to do a performance require, which is known as the federal single audit, simply because the district receives a, you know, over a certain threshold of federal dollars that come into the district. We have to then do a program audit of all the federal programs, as well as then a set of state program audit requirements, looking at things like child nutrition, DAF, little new projects or grants, more or less compliance issue to make sure that funds that are being received are being expended on those designated programs appropriate. So, as part of our tests of all of those programs, we don't have any findings to report back. There's nothing on the federal side, nor the Wisconsin Department of Administration and State's audit guidelines that I've kept bringing up for you tonight. So, that is a very urgent sign as well. A couple of items to highlight for you is there is included in your audit report, which is known as, which is known as an emphasis of matter. There's actually two separate things that are right up there for you. There was a brand-new GAZB implementation, brand-new accounting standard that was adopted during the year. It's known as GAZB eighty-seven. Not to bore you too much, but it all has to do with lease accounting, very complex. We're still pulling our hair over this one on the, you know, CPA on the external auditor side. Basically, what it boils down to is a lot of work goes into identifying specific agreements, evaluating them for the proper criteria, should they be brought into and considered a lease, which we used to refer to as an operating lease. Now, we're looking at it as a function of external financing, so like a long-term debt instrument. Bad news there is we now actually have to look at that under similar things going forward. So, if we're just fresh in this fiscal year that we're currently operating in, there's subscription-based IT agreements, which are now going to be in the same categories. So, we're gonna be identifying all of those types of agreements, and that'll be a brand-new thing for the twenty-twenty-three audits. And what we're seeing is there's a lot more agreements that we actually have to evaluate under what's known as GAZB ninety-six, and maybe not necessarily all being brought into your financial statements themselves, but we do have to go through individually and evaluate them one at a time, which is very time-consuming and very technical at its core. What all of that means for you is your budgeting side of things, unfortunately, that you, you know, for lack of a better term, you guys really don't care because you're budgeting for those annual payments, the principal and interest components for Fund ten, twenty-seven. None of that, none of those numbers are gonna change. The decisions that you're gonna make come budgeted. All that really matters is getting the gold star of DPI requires and having your audit issued in accordance with GAAP. So, again, yay, yay for us. It's kind of the, the auditor full employment act. Again, for lack of a better terminology, a lot of additional work that we're gonna have to go through in order to issue this one year twenty twenty-three. And then lastly, a couple of the other reports that we also then have filed, like the fifteen-oh-six AC reports, all of that leads to DPI to make sure that what the district is uploading and then what matches our audit, we're on the same terms there. All of those are taken care of, as well as then the final reporting piece back to the federal government in the federal base selection form. Again, that's just a, a report on all of the grant funding that's been received by the district and has been appropriately identified as receipts. I did miss one piece as well in the emphasis of matter we did have this year, which is known as a fire period adjustment. It will kind of throw our analysis off here, and I'll highlight that when we get to it. This relates back to fiscal year twenty twenty-one year and the implementation of yet another GAZB statement, GAZB eighty-four. Basically, what it came down, what it comes down to is the district has some HRA funds that have always been properly identified and reported back to DPI. Prior to GAZB eighty-four, we would be reporting those differently. They were excluded from the financial statement audit. Because at its core, the HRA deposits that went into a, to a trust within the, within a school district of Osceola's name, all of those balances are assigned to, you know, either currently, our current staff or retired staff, they're all identified with their proper balances there. Well, what GAZB four said is we should be taking those, says the district technically has control over those assets, you know, trust in the name of the school district of Osceola, those are technically quote-unquote our assets. And if a teacher would then leave or staff member would leave and wouldn't have been vested, those funds would have been reverted back to the district. Yes, restricted only for future HRA contributions. Sorry to go into weeds on it, but that's basically at its core why we had to pick up all of these funds. Because that, that deposit is material, it's over two million dollar deposits, we picked them up in your financial statements, and they're now included in your financial statements. Again, I'll highlight that for you when I get to there. In the past, they've always been properly reported on the district side. We've just always taken a stand prior to eighty-four appropriately that there were assets in the district. It's because of eighty-four, which we shouldn't have thought in the prior year and implemented incorrectly, we actually missed that piece, and we're picking it up here in twenty twenty-two. So, we dive into some actual numbers that do impact more or less your, your, you know, annual budget, your day-to-day decision-making. Item number two there, this is your general fund. If you're familiar with the different fund terms that you're, that you pay attention to, Funds ten and Fund twenty-seven are included in these balances, because essentially Fund twenty-seven pulls this up to Fund ten in the end year. So, these are the combined, the combined values of results of all instructional, regular education and special education are in these balances here. The top portion here is the balance sheet, which are all balances as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, so snapshot in time. And here we present four years of data, more or less looking for what, you know, the big thing there is looking for trends. So, again, if there's a number that really jumps off the page and significantly increases or significantly decreases, it's kind of more or less getting the, what's the story behind that number? Again, keep in mind that six thirty, twenty, that is quote-unquote the, the main COVID year, and we're kind of in now the COVID aftershocks, is kind of how I've been explaining to a lot of districts as well, because you'll notice that things like your total revenues definitely increased from twenty twenty into twenty twenty-one, continuing into twenty twenty-two. So, kind of the, the initial COVID hit came in twenty twenty, your expenditures kind of went through the roof or kind of decreased depending on the activity here at, at the district. And then a lot of federal funding and state funding, basically now has, has come into it and backfilled as a result of, you know, various legislations at both the federal and the state level. So, that's one of the main reasons why you're looking at your cash and investments, it kind of did jump, is increased since twenty twenty. More or less, you're getting all of this funding back from federal and state sources, with obviously your, your total expenditures have also now started to increase as well. So, as far as looking at the general fund and looking at the fiscal health of the district, there's a couple of highlighted rows here towards the bottom of the page. It's just a metric of taking a look at what your, your fund balance is, those are the reserves of the district, comparing it to your total expenditures and then calculating the ratio. So, backing up real quick to the fund balance section, fund balance of your equity, your reserves of the district are broken down, you guys are using three categories on your fund balance. It's either restricted by an outside source, such as a granting agency. Back in twenty twenty-one, that restricted seventy-five thousand dollars there, was counting school funds, so it's a specific aid that paid into the district, and you need to compare that up to specific expenditures that would have occurred during the year. Twenty twenty-one, you, you received more money in than you expended during the year, so DPI requires you to make a restriction of those dollars. All of those dollars and all of the awards in twenty twenty-two were expended, hence the reason, you know, zero in twenty twenty-two. The committed fund, funds are decisions that the board here has taken internally. You've placed specific commitments over this specific dollar amount for a specific program or project. I believe in this case, it's your agriculture project, so the agriculture program. So, as far as the revenue that came in compared to the identified expenditures, that's what 's going to be spent, all of those dollars have actually increased to about five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars you see there in twenty twenty-two. So, adding that filter down, see what are your true reserve balance, Mike, you come up with your unassigned fund balance. It's over six point one million dollars in total liquid, or not liquid, but your total true reserves of the district. So, we take a look at that dollar and all the comparisons, see what does it take to run the school district in total year for the entire year? And that's where that, that total expenditure number is, about twenty-one point seven million dollars for the entire year. So, we compute this ratio, it's twenty-eight point one percent, basically stating that we can run the district, the whole year is a hundred percent, we can run it for twenty-eight point one percent a year. You know, where does that really fall into? What does it actually mean if you're looking at this, this ratio compared to another, another dis, district, regardless of size? Now, you can kind of start talking apples to apples versus apples to oranges in terms of larger district versus small district. The district policy that was taken out a number of years ago in our state that you want this ratio to be anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five percent is kind of your goal range that you want to be at. Sixteen being on the low end, twenty-five in your district policy, it actually states that it should not exceed anything more than twenty-five, and if it would, you would then as a board make decisions in order to reduce this, this ratio down, and that's the internal policy of the district. John, that policy is actually thirty percent?
Thirty.
Thirty percent?
Twenty, thirty percent, I'll be changed to.
Yep. Not above or twenty percent and not to exceed thirty percent. Just what I call a handhold on those.
Jonathan, can I ask you a question? On the committed amount where it was four seventy-seven eighty-seven, it was for the eight area. I'm assuming that was from the sale of the land. So, then why did it increase up to five forty-two in the, in twenty-two?
So, if we sold the land in.
We sold it in twenty-one, right?
Which would probably established the, the balance. What other funds would have gone into during that? I have to actually look specifically with the revenue source sort of band it went into that, that amount. So, I, I mean, to answer your question directly, I'd have to do a little bit more research to see exactly why that amount increased, which I can dig, I can dig into in a minute. So, as far as now, your, your district policies, not from below twenty and not above thirty, so we're definitely not following, following the district's policy. So, my next comment is, okay, well, look at your peers, you know, again, in Western Wisconsin, I have the luxury of saying, okay, here's all the clients that I've served in Western Wisconsin, what's the benchmark that we see in this region of the state? And that's anywhere between twenty-five to forty percent is what we're seeing. Again, knowing and keeping in mind that due to a lot of this additional ARPA funding and COVID funding, some of this fund balance is now improving the last number of years because we've controlled our expenses in twenty twenty. Everybody basically said, all right, let's hold, hold the line, stay tall on this. But then the big question mark is what is the state budget gonna look like in, in the next few years? So, it's kind of rein back as much, you know, expenditures as we possibly can, see where the budget funding is going to, to land, because we might have some holes that we can patch. So, this unassigned fund balance has been creeping up higher than what I've normally seen or historically seen if you go back seven to ten years. With now quite a few districts in, starting in twenty twenty-two and continuing into twenty twenty-three, the fund balance is now starting to drop down into what we, what I would consider the historical norm, the historical ranges what we typically see, anywhere from twenty-five to thirty percent, which is roughly near what your district policy is. So, as far as looking at where you're, where you're at, twenty-eight point one percent, I would not consider that an excessive fund balance. I would consider that, use the terminology, fiscal company does offer you some, some financing options, it does have some really nice benefits for the district. First and foremost being, due to the collection cycle of property taxes and whatnot, you definitely need to avoid any short-term borrowing needs. You start dropping down that percentage now with the fifteen percent range is usually when I see that happens. Other districts will have to carry a line of credit, about two million dollars, you know, at different times of the year, simply to make payroll. So, again, if you're avoiding that, that's borrowing, you're avoiding all those interest payments and then those cash flow issues as well. The greater, grander scheme, you also then have more favorable bond ratings. So, if you do have any need for long-term debt issuance, it is having a healthier fund balance, such as you have, will prompt you to have better reading terms and, and the like there, as well as then maybe possibly taking out some higher repair maintenance needs directly out of your fund balance in a short-term period of time. You definitely don't want to rely on your unassigned fund balance for continuing operational needs, because clearly you can spend a dollar once and it's gonna be drawing down. It's hard to replace things as soon as you become reliant on living out your savings and balances. Any questions for me here on the, the general fund before I highlight some of the other operational funds? Here again, moving on to page two here, the next item is item number three. These are your special revenue funds. These are, you know, separate section of your accounting system, which are set aside for these specific purposes. So, any revenue that's taken in, it needs to be restricted for and used for these specific purposes. So, the education trust fund, also known as Fund twenty-one there, you look at the historical data going back to twenty twenty, and all of a sudden it jumps to four hundred and sixty thousand. What effect does that? That is that lovely GAZB eighty-four accounting change that I was referring to. So, it's kind of giving a little brace when I say, okay, I missed two million dollars, but I concentrate on the very important ones here, picking up all of your other, like your scholarship fund and all that kind of stuff. Accounting-wise, it was maybe recorded somewhere paper. So, we combined it appropriately with Fund twenty-one there. I'm sorry. So, that's Fund sixty portions included. Fund sixty is in there, Fund seventy-two is in there, and any other prior balances that were reported elsewhere. And item number six here, to, to not steal your thunder, will show you where a lot of those funds basically came from. The food service fund is your Fund fifty. The major increase there obviously is a lot more federal funding was available, basically free reduced lunch program in itself. Correct me if I'm wrong, but all of your students were receiving free lunch there when that program was operating as such. So, therefore, the, the federal funds that flowed into there with your existing expenditures basically increased your fund balance available in that fund. Again, all of those funds must be used for food service purposes. So, the highlight there is if you have any capital needs within food service, those can also, they should be appropriately coded to Fund fifty, or Food Service Fund, it would draw those funds down in future periods. The next funds, the other community service, they all are lumped together in your financial statements eventually. It's known as your Fund E's or your community service funds, your adult rec, your kids' club, your pool, and then your middle school activities account are all being Fund E. Really, from an, from an audit perspective, is these, all of these programs should either break even, or you would have a little bit of a return on investment in order to increase the program offering to efficient capital needs, such as the need for the pool, that would hopefully then cover those future, future needs as well. So, in the event you have something like your education and recreational one, which is technically negative, you would definitely want to look at those programs being offered and maybe, maybe, maybe the uncomfortable conversations need to be had, either increasing fees for those programs or producing expenditures where possible or if necessary. The other alternative is if you need to supplement and bring this account up to even, you can have some property tax levy directly into that specific program, given that's more of a less, I hear, decision versus, you know, at the board level. Moving on to item number four is the debt service fund. So, this is where all of your long-term debt payments need to be coded, and that's where they're all accounted for, so all the principal interest payments flowing into your debt service fund. So, during twenty twenty-two, you see a large increase here. The main reason for that is the issuance of long-term debt, as well as some of the, the long-term premiums that were paid during the year or that were incurred during the year. At the end of the year, what this balance represents is reserves, which will be used to meet future debt service payments. So, it's not like they're gonna be trapped there in the future, they'll just go to reducing the amount of property capital that you needed to meet future long-term debt needs. So, and one of the other major, major reasons why this increased during twenty twenty-two is there was a required payment, which has now since been made, that you have to current, since the end of six thirty to today, the long-term bond of one point five million dollars that they paid off during the year, which will then now reduce that amount available in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
So, the balance in twenty-one was five hundred and fifty-two thousand. And then on the audit report on page sixty-three, it shows that the total expenditures were three hundred and seventy-four H one. So, obviously, we were maybe carrying a balance where we levied more money for debt, and then we did pay it. So, is there any obligation of the school if they are levying more for debt payments, which we also did this October, that those need to be paid within a short period of time? Or they can carry that?
Right. So, as far as when the timing, when the timing of the levy, which is when the timing of the payment.
Or when do they make that excess debt payment that they levied on the taxpayers?
Right. They would normally make that in the next fiscal year. So, typically, a lot of my districts work with somebody like their financial advisors, who basically say, here's how much you're gonna levy, and here's when your required debt payment is going to be. So, they, they match that up. Your next debt payment is due in November, November twenty twenty-two in these numbers. So, typically, that's what's done, is you're gonna levy for it in one fiscal year. Because of the cutoff at six thirty, normally, that next payment is in November twenty twenty-two.
So, you said we ended up with one million six, and we had that payment annual number of one five. What should have happened to the balance from the one six to the one five? Should that payment up onto and paid as principal?
It would, it would be a combination of both principal and interest.
Right. And maybe also should be a defecation statement that you could, if you do levy more in your Fund thirty-nine, sometimes maybe you can use your debt service line to keep your levy flat, so that you're not, you know, having one year where you're levying really high and the levy's dropping because your price value is going up. So, you levy a little bit more in your debt service payments, and then usually in May, you may give a defecation statement if that's what you decided to do. And that would be the extra payment I, I think you're referring to, right?
But it should then be done in May?
You don't have to do it. You don't have to do it, you're not required to do it, but you can do it.
Yep. Otherwise, it just feels incorrect.
It could collect interest in that fund, you know, whatever.
But then you're paying interest on the debt.
Okay. Yep.
And the interest that you'd be incurring on that debt would be in accordance with the, the schedule that had been, you know, obviously set up, you know, had timed issues. So, in this case, the additional note that you, that you levied in twenty twenty-two, vast majority of that was used, obviously, in November to pay off your one and a half million dollar bond proceeds. And then going forward, you've now levied in twenty twenty-three, you've levied additional dollars there. What I would normally see is yes, either a defeasance payment, or it would then reduce the amount you need to put in there for the next year's principal interest payments. You're common to have some fund balance. Absolutely. It's normally, you know, obviously, you can see historically, usually in your, in your terms, and I think for your outstanding payments, which I'll highlight here in just a minute, usually about a half a million dollars, what you would normally want to see, because those next debt payments probably are, in this case, actually, what I'm just thinking off the top of my head, you're gonna be about one, one point one million dollars annually on the remaining debt that's needed in order to pay off the long-term note that's still outstanding. So, that's what I would expect to see, about just over a million dollars is what I would think off the top of my head you can see in that, in this, this line item for twenty twenty-three. So, moving forward on item number five, these are your capital projects funds. So, these are all restricted projects, you know, if there's any long-term capital needs. During twenty twenty, twenty twenty, we had the long-term net issuance of about ten million dollars that went into the long, the capital projects fund. In twenty twenty-two, that, that is the two point three million dollars that is left yet to be incurred and spent. So, that's what's left over, that'll be, I think, the, that's, that would be expended in twenty twenty-three, maybe possibly depending on what payments hit, which they're in at twenty twenty-four as well. The only other item up there is the long-term. The only other item off there is the long-term capital projects fund, which I believe that started back in two thousand and eighteen. The five hundred dollar deposit was essentially to, or get the clock started. It's a DPI budgeting function at this point. They allow districts to set up this long-term capital projects fund. So anything that got deposited in there needed to be set aside for a certain number of years in order then to expend those dollars regardless of what the amount was. So if you see they did five hundred bucks back in twenty-eighteen, somehow through this long-term plan, maybe took out two million dollars and threw it in this fund. Regardless of when that two million dollars came, so long as that five hundred dollars didn't, that started the clock of when you can start making allowable expenditures. So a lot of districts did the exact same thing you guys did, put five hundred dollars in there to start the clock. So to potentially use this as a budgeting tool going forward, you have yet to, need to use that by this point.
And we have a ten-year plan that was put into that when we started that. But many of those projects have already been completed because of our debt question that we had, the ten million dollars. So the, like I said, we've given is to update that plan, have a plan moving forward for additional projects. And then look at, consider that as a place for future.
A big question mark of, you know, if by chance a future referendum question does fail, here's just another potential avenue to, to explore that you'd be able to go down. So that's one of the biggest reasons why this was implemented back in two thousand and eighteen or seventeen exactly. So again, it's a box order. Item number six here, this is these, these are the fiduciary funds I was referring to at the beginning of the major change here. The separate fund on your books that are, that's used to account for all of the post-employment benefits that are offered and paid for during the year. So this is actual reserves or amounts on your books used and set aside for this purpose. Technically now have three separate balances that are included in this four point seven million dollars. You've got the OPEB of the fund seventy-three, big post-deployment benefits plan in total. You've got a supplemental pension, pension plan. And then last, you, you now have the HRA balances which are now included in this balance, which in the past have not been included in these others, hence the reason it now jumped in twenty-twenty-two. From the two point seven up to the four point seven, your OPEB amount on hand is twenty-six million dollars. The supplemental pension plan is about seventy-one thousand. And then again, you're roughly just over two million dollars set aside for the HRA needs. Your operating, what's known as a pay-as-you-go basis. So as these retiree, retiree benefits have become due, these are the reserves that are used in order to meet and pay off those amounts. And in just a minute here, I'll kind of go into, or if you take a look at what, what, what do we owe in total on all of these promises for future retirees. You, you work with an actuary every year, which is key benefits. I tongue-in-cheek call them the rich doctors of the coming world. Spend a big wheel or dart at it and say, that's not what you have based on all the other factors that go into it. We're smarter than I am in that total calculation is. So this is what's on hand to meet those future obligations going forward. Segue into item number seven is your long-term obligations. This is the, the total outstanding debt for the district. The main two that you want to pay attention to are the top two lines, general obligation bonds, general obligation notes. You've got roughly nine point eight million dollars in total obligations at this point. Again, the bonds have now been paid off of this year twenty-twenty-three. The notes are payable through twenty-thirty with the annual principal and interest requirements just over a million dollars a year, one point one million dollars annually. Again, and that's going to come directly out of levy. The other numbers, just to highlight again for you, like I was just kind of talking about, just to put some real numbers to it. The actuary only determined liabilities on your books for the supplemental pension plan, about seventy-six thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, excuse me, as compared to, that's the liability, the future projected liability you're going to have to meet. Currently, you have seventy-one thousand dollars in assets set aside in order to meet those obligations. Obviously, they're not all that seven hundred, or that, that seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars isn't going to come due all in one year. Hence the reason you get seventy-one thousand dollars annually that you're setting aside that you have available to meet those annual requirements. The other, the other post-employment benefits, the OPEB is five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars that is currently projected. That's what you currently know. Obviously, as your employees now continue the length of services, that liability will grow into the future. Hence the reason why you have roughly two point six million dollars on hand in order to meet those needs. So you're still underfunded quote-unquote for those liabilities, but you will be making that up in future periods. The other big one there which kind of throws everything out of line, real brief conversation on it, is that WRS pension liability. And not just getting, it's actually an asset to the district. So the WRS system in total for the state of Wisconsin is extremely well-funded. So the funds are active, where you can take home, so you can go look at what the Illinois state retirement system is. They're severely underfunded, where in the state of Wisconsin, we're actually overfunded. So technically, we have a five point five million dollar asset. That's just the school's, could also the share of the, the total WRS process pension system. In future years, if, if the assets aren't handed down in Madison and start decreasing in value, we might slip, switch back over to like twenty-nineteen when we actually had a little bit of an unfunded liability. And that was only ninety-nine point eight percent funded back in twenty-nineteen versus now we're about a hundred and two or a hundred and three percent funded in twenty-twenty-two. All that, what that all basically boils down to is there is a statutory debt limit that you're required to operate under. So it's ten percent of the total equalized value there that you're seeing. The one point one trillion dollars in total equalized value of district property. So your technical limit is a hundred and sixteen billion. From a school district standpoint, you'd be very unpopular individuals if you would ever reach ninety-eight percent of that total value. What I would consider a highly leveraged district, and that would be a district that has to go borrow a lot of money for a major construction and new building or something like that. Usually, I see those peter out at about thirty-five percent. And that's in the first year after a very large issuance in that first year. And then as soon as they start making payments on that, it starts, you know, doing only down. Typically, I think maybe the rough estimate is around twenty, twenty-five percent is what I normally see in this part of the state for the total loan debt that's outstanding. So basically, it boils down to you're not over-leveraged, you're, you know, in a lot of speed, about under-leveraged compared to the average. Which basically means that if you needed, needed the long-term debt, to issue long-term debt, you have the statutory availability to the district to go issue some fairly large issuances and still be right within western Wisconsin averages of what, what we can see in the future. And that, that basically concludes my two-page summary, a brief as it possibly could. If there's any questions, if you have to do, Justin?
I have questions, I can do now. So my questions kind of relate to the OPEB stuff. So they refer to the notes that are in my audit report, like notes four and five and whatever. So that five hundred and seventy-six, is that how much the district had to pay last year for the OPEB? When the actuary report was done, so then?
That, with that five hundred and sixty thousand, let me make sure, five seventy-six, that represents the total future liability. So it's the estimated payments, if you cut it off today, you would have to come up with five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars as in tight, as employees will retire.
And then on the bottom of that page, it references the actuary assumptions were used from June out twenty-one, which is pretty normal, I know that. But the study was conducted in two thousand and eighteen using the Wisconsin retirement experience from fifteen and seventeen. Is that really normal that, that they're not old?
That's what we've been seeing in every, there's a two-year cycle that goes into your actuary studies. And the district works with key benefits, who is the actuary, and they're on operating their, their, their assumptions that as an actuary, again, they're going to their reference books. And that is an acceptable and basically a very common one that more than just key benefits is using. And as those new actuary assumptions are updated, that will then impact future valuations. So yes, to answer your question directly, that is, that's what we've seen across the board. They're using those same attributes. And that's what the state is also using in calculating with the WRS pension.
The things are too. So they're comfortable. And then going to, still on note four, it has the supplemental pension plan. And it talks about the district contributed eighty-three thousand two hundred and forty-four. Where does that figure in on your sheet here?
The amount that's contributed into the supplemental pension is not directly, I can't just pick it out of any of the numbers that I have here, it would actually be a little bit of a task in order to do it. So the supplemental pension plan, the contributions that go into that plan are the amounts that are coming from front ten, twenty-seven, and fifty, basically anybody that's receiving those benefits. Those expenditures are quoted to those individual budget lines in a retirement schedule. We, I mean, we could have Shannon or district admin staff pull a report that would show exactly where that eighty thousand dollars came from. But those are expenditures that if you back up to page one of my handout, it's going to basically be buried into the total expenditures for the year. They're going to be in that twenty-one million or twenty-two million dollars a year. And they're, they're coded out appropriately where those individuals are currently working and where they're earning their wage. That's where those expenditures are then coded as far as the contribution. And that would be the revenue going into the supplemental pension part.
Right, because these are amounts promised to teachers or other staff when they retire. Because it's that one thousand, one ten that they get every year for a year's service. And then, the other one I have is still in note four, it has the defined contribution post-employment benefits. And it has that the HRA payments were a hundred and eighteen thousand. Is that the same thing, they're distributed wherever their wage is?
So the contributions that go into that plan are going to be coming out again with like ten, twenty-seven like you're thinking. I believe the number you're looking at though is the plan itself, the contributions that came out of the HRA. If I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, if you could point me to a page number, I could help you out to?
Twenty-four.
Forty-four. I believe those would be the actual expenses of the plan itself, let me check. So the one eighteen is the district's contribution to the plan, like you were, like that was, that's what I was saying earlier. Yep, okay, so the expenses of the plan itself was zero, so, okay, here. It goes back to the exact comment that I had previously, is that those are the district's plan, a hundred and eighteen, came from fund ten, twenty-seven, fifty for those employees.
I mean, because if you really look at, based on all of these things in note four, which are the whole thing, whatever, our group contribution for the years, like seven hundred and seventy, it's, it's a lot of money. So it's not just that small amount. And then my last comment is I'm glad that you'll be looking at Gatsby ninety-six, which is the subscription thing. I'm assuming you'll be doing our pre-audit stuff soon. And that you only expense in twenty-three, one year's expense of that, correct?
Right, yeah, in your, in your budget, in your fund ten and twenty-seven that you're going to normally see, you're only paying that one year of months.
Because we have some, we have some of those.
And to further put a little bit more of an insight on your direct questions of saying, in note four, you know, the total annual contributions is just over seven hundred thousand dollars, which is no small chunk of change. At the end of the day, in total, the district is still underfunded. You've made promises to retirees, going back to page two of my presentation, well more than you currently have set aside in fund balance to meet these future obligations. You're roughly what, just over fifty percent funded in some cases? So yes, in order to meet the full promises that you've made on your retirees, going back to my tongue-in-cheek, look at the state of Illinois situation, that's exactly where you find yourself in at the district level in your, your OPEB and your supplemental pension plan. So eventually, you're going to need to address those. And all districts are in the same boat, right? You all have similar retirement plans, and they're all funded in a similar fashion. You're basically looking one year ahead, two years ahead, three years ahead. How much are, are we going to actually experience in real dollars here? How much are we going to come up with on a annual basis? How much do I need fund seventy-three in order to then pay off the door the next year? So yes, it's a very, very common situation that boards are facing.
And then can we, could we get a copy of what the adjustments that you made to the financial report that you referenced in your management letter?
Absolutely, if there, if you have the management level there, there actually should have been an attachment as well, which would be basically every journal entry that was posted to the books. And if you do see that incomplete listing, if you don't have it in front of you, it would be a separate letter. Any of them that are determined that are, that have the initials PDC beforehand, those are all prepared by client entries. So some of those, we worked with Lenat and the staff at the time, they did the work. We had to post it on our side just because we got the records after the fact. So it's, you know, the district taking, taking credit for doing that work after we've already started our work.
Yeah, I don't think it would be covered.
It's a, it's a separate letter, and if you don't have it, I'll make sure that it's available too.
Any other questions for Donna? The material weaknesses, I know in past year, they've had the segregation of duties. That's very common, as you stated, the material audit adjustments, is that one that was carried before?
Yeah, and usually that's one of the, the less pickier ones. Normally, it's very common in our school districts here in the state of Wisconsin. There are a number of districts around that don't have that funding because their records are basically, you know, don't require any adjustments after we've started our audit work. So it's not unheard of to eliminate that one, we've got a little ways to go.
Any other questions? Thank you, Donna, thank you. Before we get into the next item, is there a volunteer to the report?
Sure, I can.
We'll have to finish the report, we'll start with Lenat.
All right, excuse me. Our wellness week was the last week of March. And if you recall, you heard it for the first time with the American Heart Association. And it was like a mind-blowing success. We had, excuse me, forty-six percent of students participate in the Kids' Heart Heroes challenges. And the number that I have here in my report is actually no longer accurate because we've received some company matching donations after I had this number. But what I have here is that we raised seventeen thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. And like I said, it's more than that now. And that goes to the American Heart Association. We were on the radar of multiple levels of leadership within that organization. And they were watching our totals jump, not climb, like jump, skyrocket. And because of our huge successful campaign, our school was gifted back thirteen hundred dollars to spend on wellness-related things as a gift. Our students enjoyed the challenges, it was fun. They liked collecting the keychains, of course, and the other prizes that are still coming. A huge thank you goes to Kristen Boylo and Jen Johnson. They did the coordination and the organization of it all. And we had amazing buy-in from the rest of the staff also. Many, many staff members received gift cards, twenty-five dollar Amazon gift cards. And some, there were two different things that they could do to earn those gift cards. And some earned fifty-dollar gift cards because their class was able to meet both of the goals. So it was not only beneficial for the American Heart Association, but we got some pretty cool effects too. April is Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. So, oh yes, it's holding an event for child abuse prevention called Connect for Kids. This is not a new event, but it has not, we've not had this event for a few years now. At least since I've been here, we haven't, so at least five years, if not longer. But we're bringing it back this year, so hopefully everyone enjoying us on April twenty-fifth. The event is from five thirty to seven. We'll have crafts, lots of activities, vendors, we have community vendors. We have our community helpers, ambulance EMS, EMS and police. And there's a really cool organization called Bikers Against Child Abuse, BACA. They are very cool individuals in the work that they do to support the They are very cool individuals in the work that they do to support victims of child abuse. It's really impactful, and so they're coming and will be in attendance with us as well. And Jen Peterson is one of our speech and language pathologists. She works really hard, and she had to tell me what this specifically was like three times. Her Gestalt Natural Language Acquisition Certification. And basically, it's a new, well, not new, it's a different way to help students, specifically those with autism mostly, acquire language and overcome some communication challenges. And we've seen a lot of growth with our kiddos since she took this. She pursued it independently, the courses and exam were really rigorous, and she paid for it out of pocket. And so, pretty big deal because she was just really wanting to help some of our kiddos. And now she's going to be one of the few featured on their website, so she's got to get a headshot taken. Our colors this month are gray, white, brown, and black, and our focuses are on acceptance and appreciation. And then toward the end of the month, we'll be celebrating Administrative Professionals Day. And Tara and Holly have done absolutely amazing and incredible, and they learned their new roles. And they have just jumped at a lot of different challenges this year. So we're excited to celebrate them in that way for the first time. That's all I have for you.
Good job with the American Heart.
Yeah, they took a cute picture.
Yeah.
I'm enjoying. Hi. State testing is underway at the intermediate schools with a forward exam. We started last week, and each grade level kind of created a normal schedule, which they believe is best for kids and best for how they're going to complete that forward exam. So a lot of that test taking is happening in the morning when students are out there and it's so exciting to be at school. We currently have a hundred and sixty-five students enrolled in summer school, and we're still keeping that registration open all the way until that very first day of summer school.
What's like last year's numbers, you know?
Uh, no, I can look.
I'm sure it's great.
Yes.
It's awesome.
It's so awesome, I do believe that we have more this year.
That's what I was trying to get at, but yes.
I can definitely look, I don't know off the top of my head, but yeah, a hundred and sixty-five, it's exciting. And we're still, we're still letting them come on through. We have ten teachers excited and ready to be there in June, creating their courses. And huge shout-out to Belinda Johnson, so she took over Abby's role with summer school. And her and I working together and creating the schedule and adding kids in it, it's a boot to work with her. And it's just, it's fun getting everything ready to go. So stress-free, and we roll with it, and as soon as we think we have something, then it's like, ding ding, there's five more kids. And we're like, oh, but which is a good thing, right? Yeah, so yay, summer school. Third grade Wax Museum is coming up here at the end of the month. So Wax Museum is where our third graders are researching famous people. And they write a little script, and they try to memorize it, they do memorize it. And you get to go in and they're dressed up, and they do their speech, and it's pretty cool. So this is something that has continued for quite a while at the intermediate school. We do not foresee really ever going away, we've always received such positive feedback. So that is coming up here April twenty-eighth. Thank you to the PTA. Teachers were awarded grants through the PTA dollars for many different things. It's just, it's such a great thing that PTA continues to do this for everyone. It's an easy grant process that goes through, and yeah, it's just exciting. From flexible seating to hooks that we were able to give away to students, headphones are so important during the forward exam. We've learned that it's the actual headphone, not just the in-the-year ones. The actual headphones help students way better, so they're helping us with that too. Four fifth-grade students are preparing for this year's Math Masters Competition. We have four that are over that ninety percent I love math in fifth grade. So getting them ready to go to sixth grade, excited for Trevor and James to hit them running. So yeah, that is coming up at the end of the month. Month coach Tag, so Tracy Tagg has taken that over for Tyler Olson as he's home with little Dax. And then the very last thing, Roxy Newman. She is starting the first-ever art club at the intermediate school. So a pretty cool thing, ages third through fifth, they have an opportunity to decorate the hallways, make things for the concert, just bring their artistic ability forward, and it's a really neat thing. Roxy is, she's just amazing, so it's a great opportunity for kids, we have not had that before. That is all I have.
Questions?
Thank you.
Amanda?
All right, so kind of similar things, we also have state testing happening right now, started last week. We do it just a little bit differently where it's in the class that they are taking the test of. So if they have science in Block Two, that's when they take their test. We are doing some positive attendance rewards, so if they're there for their test session, they get their game on ticket, which goes into a drawing bin. Although three kids today, just the eighth graders that won, and they were just exhausted, and they just had one test. So she's like, I don't, what am I doing, what am I supposed to be getting? They just tried, but they put their heart and soul into it. So running the forward is a really big process and a lot of work for everyone in the building. Lisa Stoppel, our counselor, takes the lead on all of that, so a huge thank you to her. She's running on like crazy right now, trying to do her normal job, plus making sure testing is going as smoothly as possible. All of our staff members are trained and step in and help when people are gone, or coaching, or whatever it might be. So lots of teamwork to make all that happen and be as stress-free as possible. Last Friday, our middle schoolers had their talent show. We had thirty-five kids, they used Super Brave, they get up on stage, some of them multiple times. So it was really great to see them be vulnerable in front of their peers, they're already hard enough in middle school. So, you know, kudos to them for being able to do that. And thank you to Renee School Skee, she's the one who organized all that, that's her baby, she loves doing that. So thank you to her. Two Fridays ago, we had our seventh grade courage retreat, I talked to you about that before we went. Huge, huge success, I'm so excited that it can be in the fall next year. I was only there for the last two hours, but that was probably the most powerful part of, kind of, I guess, the culmination of what had been led up to all day long. Kids had an opportunity to write down like what their act of courage was on this little paper, and they could share if they wanted to or not. And we probably had twenty-five kids of our seventh grade group go stand in front of all their peers and state their act of courage. Some of them apologized to peers, some of them told them what they're going to do and stand up for moving forward. We had kids up there crying and sharing all what their peers, it was super, super powerful. So lots of hugs from peers that you wouldn't normally see together, and just understanding where people are coming from. It was, it was a very, very powerful day, so lots of positivity after that. Also, thank you to PTA, we got lots of things too from them, so things like more stand-up desks, weight room equipment, games for advisory, and seating rooms for windtime, just different, different things that kids are asking for that we don't necessarily have, so. And then lastly, we made some major changes to our windtime at the end of the day. The last six weeks, we've tried some different challenge activities. So we had two groups of kids, and today's one type, but one of them, Ms. Denzen took a group of kids that don't maybe need help academically, and we're trying to push them as hard as we can right now to be uncomfortable and be uncomfortable with learning something new on their own. So they did a STEM challenge and robotics challenge. There are no directions, just pick whatever activity you want to do, and they had to figure it out. And they presented to a group of us last week, I don't know if it's on Facebook yet, but it will be soon because it was super cool. People had little robots, they were making all different patterns, they had little movies that they had made with little guys. There's lots of different cool things then. They don't, they don't get to do it right now in their core classes, so it was just really fun. And to watch those, that group of kids be challenged separately was also pretty cool. So thank you to Ms. Denzen for stuff that I've been hosting at our eighth graders.
Okay, any questions? Adam?
Ken Phelan retired last week, which was huge. He's going to do a great job stepping in. We usually celebrate our student celebrations with teacher tunnels, and we did the opposite with Kenny and Adam walk the hallways with all the kids lying in the park there on his way to his bus, I didn't quite know what to do. We did pull out, right, it wasn't surprising. So it was, it was pretty cool to see a smile on his face for that. So he'll be missed, but we're asking for his reassignment. Yesterday was our state testing day. We tested over four hundred kids and two different, three different tests actually, the pre-CT for freshmen and pre-CT for sophomores, and ACT for juniors, all at the same time. Nicole Brown, single-handedly organized all of it as far as proctor trainings. Our staff was amazing, they had every support staff trained, teacher trained. We had people that never administered a test before administering a test. The tech department was awesome. We had less issues yesterday testing four hundred kids than we did when we just did one group of eleven graders last year. So a lot of positive comments, staff was awesome, giving us constructive feedback. Just nice to get it done on one day and not disrupt the building for multiple days in the past, so that was huge. We finalized our different levels of LAD, so everybody was notified for Sum KUMLAD, Mega KUMLAD, and LAD. Tomorrow or Friday will be the last of when we finalize their class fee here. So the students pick two and some pick one. So right now, we have, the staff is holding on their one by Friday, and then we'll talk with the kids. And Amanda Wickland does a great job working with them. I found out this last week that Olivia Sheeple won the Cole Fellowship Scholarship Award, which is amazing and awesome. It's a ten thousand dollar scholarship, so it's highly competitive. I personally, I'm a Cole Scholarship reader, and it is very, very hard. You get like twenty applicants, you have to read, and they're so good. So just a huge shout-out, proud of her for the last four years here to earn that, to earn that award. And then wellness week for us too was awesome. Oscar did a great job organizing it, we had all the kids' pictures up, why it was a huge part of organizing the talent show. It was, it's just great to see the kids involved, they had a ton of activities. It was organized chaos, and it went off great, so very grateful for that.
Any comments? Congrats to Olivia. Scott?
So last Wednesday, Little Lord Conference Scholar Athlete Bank was held in Amherst. This year, our two recipients from our school are Dylan Soluski and Rachel Allred. And then just recently, last weekend, it's supposed to stay in the now a little bit here, but. Proud as it will. We're all right, it's not on Facebook, well, maybe not maybe the other. We were just notified Rachel Allred just received a WAA honors, uh, for Scholar Athlete. So she will be our fifth student athlete in history that is being named to discover an athlete for the team, I guess, in two thousand and two, two thousand and three, which is really cool. She's going to be recognized at a ceremony in Wassa on May seventh along with fifteen other student athletes across the state. We are in the process of late group planning for next year, where we take seniors and juniors, we're starting to get that stuff going. Going to be going through training sessions for help of a community freshman. Just recently, we're having Jackie Breaking and the handling for our team as well, they went through some trainings. It will be one of the coaches. And in cooperation with the OSF, the Chamber of Commerce, we are hosting a job fair and career expo on April twenty-sixth. From two o'clock to three thirty will be for our OHS students, and from maybe three thirty to six thirty will be for our community. Nicole Brown has done excellent job recording all these activities, and we're going to have the Chamber of Commerce at the forefront of this great event.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you heard a lot about state testing, just want to remind you that it's also our state report card. So when people talk about taking it seriously, that's the lie behind it. And then also thinking about the pieces that's all technology, when we talked about headphones and devices, and just a computer being charged, so you can test all day, you can challenge. So there's lots of pieces and parts, and there are lots of teammates, and people really get to learn each other. So it's kind of a really positive experience, and of course, now we wait for results. Well, we're done, yeah. And then hot off the press as of today, you have a piece of paper in front of you that looks like this. This isn't on the down low like Scott's, but it's new information. On March twenty-eighth, Mark Adamino, that said that the DPI has partnered with the Graduation Alliance to offer some support to school districts for students who are chronically absent or are struggling academically or socially emotionally. And so it was, do we want to opt in or not? And as a team, of course, we want to opt in, we want to see what they have. So I actually had an opportunity to meet with the program coordinators today. And it really is a program in which we can refer students, and then they do an outreach to the families and offer success coaching, is what they call it, academic success coaches, and they do needs assessments. It's just another opportunity for students who, again, chronic absence is considered by unexcused absences in a school year. Academic struggles, they just have about failing from one class or struggling in class. And then, or students who haven't shown up at all, so they'll do an outreach. There's some data in there for you to look at, you can see it's a difficult population, in some cases could do it. But the other thing that we learned today was that parents can also self-prefer and reach out for a success coach if they feel like that's something that they want. So that was fantastic. I did, I'm like, like, how many staff do you have though, really? I sent this out to the whole school district, and they shared that they had a school district in Georgia that has a hundred thousand students. They sent it out to everybody, and that their numbers went up, skyrocketed, but they have the people to make the magic happen. So, hey, we're in, we're doing it. So we have work to do as a team to figure out how this is all going to roll. But wanted to bring it to you first because people will be getting emails about it if you have students in the district and you actually do not know what it was that came out.
Where's the funding number, families have to figure that?
Nope, it's all free through the DPI. So the DPI has created a relationship with this Graduation Alliance. And in Mark's letter, it said that it was through the end of the school year, so I did confirm that it's through the end of twenty twenty-four. So we're going to pilot it for the rest of the year, see how it goes. Yeah, it should be a great opportunity for our families.
Okay, well, as part of the mental health program, increased professional development has been just that continued priority. So my partner is E Street Therapy, Cody Dexter, he's just been an awesome resource for a lot of our students and families. And he's going to be offering a professional development session just with people service staff. They just really want to gain some more knowledge, kind of work with him as a resource on topics like anxiety, depression, motivating unmotivated students, teaching resilience, and looking for some of the best ways to handle students with trauma. Those are all just really common themes that our school counselors are just kind of working with students and families on a pretty much a daily basis. So just trying to increase their knowledge and experience in those areas. Like to give a big shout-out to Alex Kendrickson, she came on as an admin assistant last year to support district-wide data and special ed. And she's just, she's just really stepped up to the plate and been a really big team player in every single thing we ask her to do. Even with helping out for proctoring ACT or pre-ACT yesterday, so just anything that she's asked for, she just jumps in and, you know, comes on very willingly. She was a huge asset for our procedural compliance assessment, so that was kind of like special ed, making sure we're doing all the things. She's been huge help with that. You guys have heard a ton about state testing, but yep, yesterday kind of just, a huge shout-out to the high school staff because we just ran things a little bit differently, and like Adam said, we had to, you know, everybody had to help support, you know, some of our students with IEPs, Bible fours, just these small groups. Just everyone kind of stepped up to the plate, and it was really, really awesome to work with, so. Any questions?
Sorry?
Nothing else?
And then Shannon, you'll be included eventually in this also. Next on the agenda is policy zero one six seven point three.
As the board requested to have this policy for review, you can see in the new agenda proportions, we have our current active policy that is listed there. And then we also include a draft of options that are available in the policy. I believe there perhaps was a miscommunication and misunderstanding at the meeting when this was brought up that we were considering ending public comment meetings, and that wasn't the case at all. It was a matter of whether public comment should be also included during the committee. So I would take any recommendations from board members regarding any changes within the policy.
As a member who asked for this policy, brought that on the board, that I just want to ensure that there's an opportunity for public comment at any time the board gathers. So whether it's just a committee meeting, I don't think having, if we say that we would have it at committee meetings, have it at five o'clock, it's a deal. I think just anytime that the board gathers, that there should be this opportunity for public comment if we see fit. So that would be my wish going forward, how we word that in this open, current conversation. I don't want to say anything, saying it happens at every committee meeting, because they're not in one o'clock or right before the regular meeting. Whereas in my thoughts would be is we're having it at the regular meeting, so it's included in this gathering. But I just feel like if we're going to have hot topics that people have opinions on in a community, that we avoid like all the time at any gathering. But I just feel like if we're gonna have, um, hot topics that people have opinions on in a community, that we, um, afford like all the time to comment time at any gathering.
So, if I'm understanding what you're stating is that if not a normal board meeting, we're gonna be like a make, because we have audio to form during the current board. If we have a special meeting, for example, we have one on March twentieth. That would be an opportunity to, um, separate reading. I would say that's easy to add in if the board still wishes to do so. We need obviously a first and second reading. With that case, I would also recommend to that we, um, to the management as we start that committee meeting as well. Start that, but it's a board decision to make and bring back a second policy review. If the, if the, if the board still wishes.
So, would you word it that it would state that on the night that the board convenes, that there's the, that there's a public comment session? So, that would mean whether it's committee meeting or board meeting.
Yeah, as I looked at the draft, it just says the presiding officer shall be guided by the following rules. And it says, public comment shall be permitted. And I think if you just leave it open to that, then it would be the responsibility of the agenda makers, you know, so the chair and Mark to ensure. And April, of course, if she does that, put together agendas, that any time we would gather, it would always should be that we have an opportunity for public comment. That doesn't commit us to committee. It doesn't commit us to, but. And I, you know, have to recognize that there possibly could be meetings that there isn't anybody that comes in, which is that, you know, address the board nuts on too. I just think they should be afforded to if they feel passionately about it.
Do you have any concerns then in regards to the length of the meeting?
I never, I never have. But that's, that's my own personal opinion. I think we have it, and our policy currently is five minutes and I feel like that would bear well. And I know we've tried to look at like limiting them on the topics and having a speaker for a room and I just don't know if that works well. And it creates more work for the chair to try to, but I think just limiting it to five minutes and.
What if there's a special meeting for, say, expulsion or something that was directly going, or going in the whole session?
So, to me, if I'm reading this draft right, so it would come down to the preceding officer shall be guided by the following rules. We would know that we wouldn't have.
I would recommend that you don't want it because if we're gonna expulsion here and that is a closed session. Who regardless, and they have an audience there prior to an expulsion resume. I can certainly draft up some, it's not part of the minimal process with policies, but the board still wishes to do so. We can get that up to good for the next board.
So, in the next reading of the policy, would you go through and like select which options you think? Or, or do you want, do you want to do that and then bring it back to us when we have them inputted? When I was looking at the draft, sorry.
So, my, I guess my question is, you know, like, um, in our current policy, do you not, do you not wanna change? I think the public comment or meetings policy that we have addresses all the new things fairly well. It would just be a matter of setting the expectation that we have audience from the board at other committee meetings that are not very scheduled for things. I don't know if there's a need for you to do the other options. Still don't wish to change. Can I bring back this, uh, option for a second or not?
Any further thoughts and comments on that? Um, next on the agenda is policy zero one five five committees.
So, this is just our current policy related to committees. I would also, if we're gonna make a change of that, I think we could put that in, um, get information here that, um, any special committee meetings should allow for public comments.
Sugar Crush.
I was a big, because under the discussion.
May, right, yeah.
Yeah, I don't wish that the current committee structure changed at all. That would be only, I would.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is twenty three, twenty four teacher and some important compensation.
Lots of scenarios here. Some of the, um, actually reviewed, um, a couple of times already. The, the first sheet would be the all staff draft. This is a normal document that the board has seen in the past. We have four, six and eight percent listed there in our official discussions. Eight percent being the ceiling for the CPI. What we did was added in the three percent increase estimate as well. So, you can see the variance in total cost estimated on current staffing within the twenty two, twenty three school year. Three percent was the varied forecast model for the referendum report that we have for next year's non-recurring. Any questions on that? Then I guess what I would do is review the three percent. As you've seen, the four, six and the eight percent. You can see here in the twenty three, twenty four teacher salary schedule. At a three percent, it would be step movement for those that have step movement available. And then five fifty, five hundred and fifty dollar increase per cell. It shows the scattergram of where all of our current employees again, based on twenty two, twenty three staff. The bottom of the sheet here shows the increase in costs from twenty two, twenty three. The average salary increase and the percent increase at three point zero two percent. And then the total cost with benefits, which would be here at W R S like such is two hundred and fifty two dollar, two hundred and fifty five, or three hundred and forty two dollars. Some districts have settled across the state and finalized their salaries for next year. Some districts are waiting until the state budget is finalized before they're doing anything. And other districts are either settling on what they feel is what they can do within their budget without the state budget. And some districts are actually choosing to give a portion of the compensational piece to meet the contract deadline of May fifteenth for issuing the contracts for next year for teaching staff. And then stating that there could be a review of additional compensational dollars once the state budget is finalized. There's obviously pros and cons to each one of those. You know, you can state that it would be great to have it as finalized and established. And you know, and we'd have, um, put that into books. It would be beyond June thirtieth and then settle that as we know more about the state budget. Think back to, um, union contracts that were negotiated. They were normally two-year contract agreements. And many times they were not settled till the second year. It would be new for many, um, new staff members because they only know what they know from the current process. So, pros and cons for both. The discussion may wanna have, um, a new plan to bring this forward consideration for April twenty sixth. They must have told that we do it and refer it away. And that's, doesn't have to be an action item, but it's something that can be discussed. And even if you wanna wait and consider, you know, think about it before the April twenty sixth meeting. And then you can make a plan later, maybe at that time as well.
So, Mark, usually the other thing that we're doing about this every year is maybe our health insurance rates and things, but this is the first year we're not self-funded. So, wondering how that plays into it, because I always think, you know, as an individual, that, yeah, we're looking at three percent. Or we know it doesn't actually equate to three percent. And especially if you add in the dental and health industry. Just curious as to where we are in that process as that relates to this.
Absolutely. Great question. So, this is salary only. So, if we're talking total package cost, you would include the dental and health benefits that we have. We actually asked for the renewal that we've done last week with health partners. So, the paperwork has been submitted for that. But no, but in the varied forecast model, we projected a seven and a half percent health insurance increase. Right now, um, our loss ratio expenses to actual claims is around at, at about a hundred percent. So, anything under a hundred is great. But we plan to meet with S F Insurance to get those done enough so we can have that established.
Are you seeing local districts that are increasing D P I?
Don't you have it really because, um, actually it was just a, you know, an email screen with a few districts in the area. And that was saying that we are waiting. We have this budgeted. We have referendum dollars available. We're gonna plan to go ahead with what we feel like we can do. And so, we're stating that they made that communication with their teachers last year. When they're, when they're in the increase, just like that if we don't know what way it in what it is, please note that you can get a letter of intent for coming back and knowing what the salary would be in less than previous year with a list.
He said, um, back ten, I've heard, because they are issued more than ten without a contract and salary.
And then just for teaching staff, letters of appointment for support staff. There isn't a timeline that's available, but obviously, we wanna make sure that people know and understand that we want them back.
Did you ever receive a C S A survey information?
Yeah, nothing has been updated regarding that G M. We, they did, you know, put that information out and Jerry at C S A had recommended. And we request that people have updated it, but not many, many districts have made that final determination. It's likely happening this month that they're gonna settle and be done for twenty three, twenty four. So, they can get everything arranged and have everything done for the May fifteen letters for the contracts for. Support staff would be the same way. Give all the different options that are available there from three to four to six to eight percent. And those variances are obviously missing there as well. Shannon, do you know what your current district is planning to do? I was curious about that. Currently in the budget, we have the three percent because that's always the reason. That was the, that's the model that we use.
I would say model. That was the placeholder model that we use, but we, I mean, nothing is agreed upon, right? Because that, that's what we're doing here. That's why I'm shaking my head because I think that, I feel like that's a common misconception out there. Is that we've already decided that it would be three percent for next year, but that's the placeholder. That's the same as our seven and a half for health insurance. It's a placeholder and now projected.
Well, that's what was communicated with the operation referendum material, right? That's what I understand. When that was, when people voted on it last year, that's what was out in the operation referendum material was three percent?
I think it was pretty well explained that that was the placeholder going forward from that for the next year.
And that's what's also been in our bear model projections for.
And that's easy.
I was just trying to run that.
You know, and obviously with the bear forecast, we did a different scenario. It's well, we're four, six and eight percent. Based on several increases in funding. Word that I heard today from our Wasta, um, Wisconsin network was that there's definitely talk at the capital of making sure that there's some increases involved in funding for K twelve education. It's just a matter of working on the details. So, that's, that seemed to be a positive news that, um, people are supporting that.
And Mark, where's the compensation study?
Yeah, so, um, Cherry, Cherry? Carrie, um, Carrie, who is in the board group, has, um, been working with us. And when we had the data that was collected last, well, actually it was the beginning of the month, mid-April, we saw lots of bigger gaps with our ten priority schools as we reference. So, she and I worked together to contact those kinds of schools again. And she's working on updating that model. Um, our goal is to have that for the twenty sixth.
What was the field yesterday when you were guys wearing health clothes? About a hundred and eighty school.
It was a joint science committee hearing by the downtown.
Over eight hundred and fifty people showed up. Based on the scene, doing, and why it's been positive for us. I appreciate those that wind the scope on our behalf a lot.
I had intended to go when I had work, so I submitted mine, um, as a letter, so.
So, it relates to the data there, um, indicating we have different options. Definitely has to be, we don't have it as a agenda item right now, so there's no determination that needs to be done. And we can make that determination of twenty sixth if we wanna do move forward or.
Any other questions, thoughts, or? Next on the agenda is building projects update.
So, I'm gonna kind of piggyback on what Adam said. Um, Tim Dillon, our head instructor at the high school, worked for the district for twenty five years. His last day was April seventh and he's moving this tremendously. Been an incredible employee for us and the kids loved him. You can see the walk of faith as he walks down the hallway. And it was all the way up to the school left corner. It was really pretty cool. We hired Aaron Donovan. He's been a high school custodian for almost ten years now. He also took some courier work for us. His birthday was April tenth. As we moved closer to my last day, I worked with Becky in April to put together transition plan for Andrew. We hope that have the transition run smoothly possible. Completed the following projects since January twenty third. So, we developed a leak in a hot water heater at the intermediate school. We had two hot water heaters out there. They were on earth maintenance list to replace if we had to. Since we developed a leak, we replaced both hot water heaters. They're one hundred gallon typical household type, um, hot water heaters. We put in on-demand hot water heaters. We found that since we put in all of our automatic flush valves, that the demand for hot water has really gone down. So, we're keeping us on demand, so we're not heating water that sits in the tank. And so, there could be energy savings there. We also developed a leak in the water softener at the intermediate school that we replace at the same time. The soft metal on the front entrance of the middle school had been changed. And this is a blow coming down the hill, but I think it kind of blends in a little bit better now. We looked at a lot of water heater replacement. That was on our referendum package that if we had the funds, we're gonna do it. That was installed in about two thousand and one two hot water heaters. And in a little bit, I'll show you a picture of the tank to have heated a thousand gallon tank. That's the way that system was designed. We had a thousand gallons of hot water sitting in the tank all day long that they kept heating. We actually replaced them with, um, four on-demand units. We found that they can get by with four. If you run into a problem where for some reason surgeons use the showers a lot more, we can add to that. So, um, I think we're gonna see a lot of energy savings there. The quiet center replaced a pool pump and, um, the pool pump body. It was twenty six years old, elementary school. This is not part of the referendum project. We, um, hot water heaters is about the same age as intermediate schools now, twenty years. One developed a leak, so we replaced that one with a on-demand hot water heater too. So, either it can stay, we can add to it, or it can go with us if we decide to move. Projects we started, like we talked about, we're referring servicing the track and the tennis courts after June fifth. It's the, uh, insulation, the vape sensors and, uh, door access is gonna start beginning of May. We're gonna middle overlay in front of the middle school after June fifth. And we have to replace a counter in the art room at the high school. You can go down and kind of see the picture that we have. So, those are the on-demand units. You can see them on the wall. That's intermediate school. We're able to get by with two of those. And then you can see that water softener that we had replaced also.
What was the difference between the on-demand versus?
They're, they're a little more expensive, but the cost savings ends up being just so much more, yeah. Yeah.
These rebates.
Not, not yet. I'm working, focused trying to get some and it's hard to get rebates nowadays. So then we did replace a soffit. It's a lot better green, different green.
When did it get switched out?
Oh, very great. Excellent. And then you can see the thousand gallon tank at the middle school. We had two hot water heaters sitting in front of it. I had to cut it up and get it out of there while they were at it. And like I said, we can add to the system if we want to. I think we're going to notice some cost savings there.
Is that where?
He's, yeah, he's welding it. He's got his helmet. This is a pool pump that we replaced, electric motor. And then the red, the two red and rainbow, the red is a great thing. That, that was original casing that we had replaced too. So that was twenty-six years old. We've been replacing that electric motor just about every eight years. It seems like since the pool's been open, they last about eight years and that environment has to be replaced. And that one's starting to make noise and that, we need to get it done.
Do you think it's all ahead? Nice work, Shannon.
Will this expend all the money now?
So right now, at the next board meeting, I've got another project. We're getting close to spending up to ten million dollars. I've got a project that we'll bring to the board for approval at the next board meeting. And it has to do with the boiler system that we installed here. We're running some hiccups and we need to do some stuff. But what I've got under working, I'll refer to it with Mark and Shannon, will be down to just over ten thousand dollars. Other than referendum money.
So Bob, we have a deadline to capture.
June twenty-second.
Is that where all the receipts have to begin to?
That's when the project's all that can be done, yes.
Okay.
There's no penalty, I guess, or Shannon probably knows a lot more about this than I do. With the way you let it explain it, there's no real penalty. It goes over. It has to do with interest and how that has to be paid back and stuff. So, but we're going to have them all, if you're trying to.
I just was the auditor. I mentioned it.
Yeah.
Any other questions for them? Thank you.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is elementary school future plan consideration.
Great. So we had Matt Wolford from Bray at our last meeting. And the discussion points to look at a capacity study proposal. Just got received that this morning. So I added that into the agenda for review. It would be a project to do a capacity study of all part of the building within the district. The fees associated with praise fixed fee of four thousand three hundred dollars to complete the capacity study. The fee is inclusive of meeting to present the findings to the school. It's not an approval agenda item, so that will come back for the April twenty-sixth. Along with that, I don't have any notes within this. I didn't know if it really went to the one to five year district budgeting plans or the elementary school future planning considerations. But Bob and Carlene have worked with Kids Club to do some access blocking of doors in the mornings for Kids Club. And set up laptop for Kids Club program to buzz people in prior to seven forty-five in the mornings. Because they don't have one, anyone supervising the door at that time. So that's, that's an added component. We also have worked with the current elementary school. Carlene is currently getting some votes for adding some security cameras within the building and also on the outside of the building for additional security concerns related to safety, obviously. And those obviously can be utilized should anything else change within the short period of time. But we know with our conversation at the last meeting that, you know, any projects, large projects or planned determinations are three to four years out anyways. So we felt as well that was a priority item, so we established that. We also did, we had actually a component with, actually it was Carl Sanderson, I would assume that the initial one, of looking at a secure entrance similar to what we have in the other three buildings. And again, with the traffic flow, especially at the elementary school, I believe that is a priority as well. Investing in dollars at the elementary school for consideration of that project as well. So some other additional work being done. I don't know what your thoughts and comments would be on the capacity study. But I definitely felt that the last time that that was something that the board felt was something we shouldn't.
Question for Carlene and Rob on the cameras. I think that's a great thinking outside the box on what we can do to get it safer down there. So kudos for that. The network can support that because that's always been the big issue is that network down there, right?
Yes, we are getting new fiber. I'm not sure on the data on that. We are doing new fiber between the middle school and high school. That project is moving. So they're hopefully doing that in May because of scheduling the board and company. We may not be able to do the elementary school until August timeframe. When we get the new fiber across, we'll be able to have the internet speed to support that. The components are, is there'll be a recording server there, but we'll just have to work through that. And I'm going to do my best to keep those costs as minimal as possible.
And I think this additional to that too is the access points for wireless to the elementary school. We can only do that work once we have the increased payment project done. But we do have that available at minimal cost. The building can access technology wise for staff and students in all areas.
As far as it goes for the capacity study, I have kind of ambivalent about it. I think it's, it's great and if people feel like they need that to make a firm decision on this project going forward, I would support that. It is a large cost. So I just want to make sure we're being, you know, physically responsible and saying, yes, I need this information to move forward with. About elementary school planning. If the team feels like that we need it, then I will support that. So I'm, I'm just on it.
I personally support. I need to make a decision. Girl study and research. I do think it's a great process, but it's pretty normal standard process for districts to look at. I support that. As far as the budgeting component goes for that, we actually just got our lottery credit from the St. Mary County. So there is budget additional budget dollars that we can afford something that wasn't budgeted this year.
And what I understand is capacity analysis is going to look at the higher grade levels. So let's look at the high school more so than. And then try some people what in regards to programming needs that potentially may be needed at the high school if you're looking forward to an addition or remodel job that allows you to think, oh, you know, maybe STEM needs more space because its capacity analysis says they don't have enough for that program. Or you can convert this into, I mean, to me, that's just thinking as far as if you're addressing all the kids involved in the school buildings by looking at capacity.
Might be a little bit different from that. The proposal, you know, shows the elementary and intermediate school to show the quantity and number of classrooms and target the maximum number of students per classroom for the capacity. And at the middle school and high school, it would be quantifying the type of space target and maximum numbers similar to that. So it's really more capacity related of how much can the building support with the current place. We are actually working internally too to look at how our building is being utilized on a day-to-day basis. And we should have something available as well. We'll be in addition to that. I think what you're referencing would be a full feasibility study of all the buildings and the needs coming forward. Deckhead spacer. That was part of our process back in two thousand eighteen with Carl Sanderson. This, this will be.
Oh, that kind of reference, looking at the high school.
Yes, yeah, for sure. We wanted to include all of it because that was the question of, you know, if we look at space determinations based on our current buildings, what can hold, what would? And you was explaining to me that like the higher high schools, it's harder to determine that because they switch classrooms only half. That really hurt me. Middle school and high school, very crazy setup. Don't believe that he said, I believe that he said he's never heard of anyone doing this to me related to that. As far as the capacity piece that you're referencing, we definitely wanted to still add in part achievement. What the space of determinations.
So Mark, do you have notes as far as what were the action or the solid items from that? Because one was that capacity. From our meeting, yeah, there was like a list of three things, right?
Oh, you somewhere. Put it in the order of. I'll let me page it here to my pages. So maybe on March eighth.
So I think was next and then look at then to see if there was any standards.
Standards for?
Classroom size.
I think you referenced that, that there isn't any set piece other than for Kids Club programming, daycare programs, like thirty-five feet per student. Yeah, like variants of sizes on classrooms based on school age children varies a little bit. But there's no set standard in Wisconsin. My notes show the, we reviewed the E-Option document. Options with prices and grade for the capacity study presenting that information back.
Oh, he was going to follow up, wasn't he, on child care? Or are we going to look at these requirements for Kids Club?
Thirty-five feet per student. We're, we're. So I have an opportunity to review that proposal from Bray. Yeah, that would be an item for consideration of approval like April twenty-sixth.
What would be the timeline then for taking that?
Any other questions? Next on the agenda, well, one to five years, is there anything more?
There are one item that I included there. That the bus inspection has been completed. And speaking to nice job of putting together the summary related to the list of items that need to be completed for those other buses, looking back on the road for years. So you can see, when you see done on a variety of them, that means they were taken care of and already taken care of. They're ready to go and some are still in the process of getting completed. Obviously the technology piece that we talked about. Jonathan referenced too for the food service fund balance being significantly higher. We already have that discussion with food service about the big priority on projects, capital for the projects that we will continue to work on.
So as far as follow-up comes tonight, Jonathan for the audit was going to get the detail that Jan requested. The policy zero one six seven point three public cap comment will support second draft form for next meeting. And then you'll follow up with a break for the time for the results back. Anything else, Shannon? At this time then, we will adjourn our meeting and resume regular meeting at six fifty.